Yes, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please rise for the invocation.
Good morning, everyone. It's my honor to be here for the invocation. I'm Patrick Womack, pastor of the Bay Presbyterian Church over at, well, the south entrance to Benita Bay. The founding pastor, John Anderson, and I would welcome anyone who wants to come and worship with us at 9:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m. on Sunday mornings. It's my pleasure to be here. Let's pray. Our God and Heavenly Father, we give you praise this day, oh Lord, and thank you for your glorious blessings of life. We're grateful for the opportunity to live in such a beautiful place in your world as we marvel at the sunsets across the Gulf of Mexico here on the western coast of Florida. Our Father, we ask for mercy. We pray for forgiveness for our sins and ask you to bless this council with wisdom and discernment today to be able to make decisions in a good and wise manner. We pray that as we look to you, that you will bless us to be a community noted for cherishing liberty and justice for all. We pray that as we pledge allegiance to our flag, that we may also declare our allegiance to be your servants in this world, to accomplish good for our neighbors and for all who live on this planet. Lord, grant that Benita Springs may be a place where all can thrive and experience the blessings of life as we look to you and acknowledge you to be our Creator, the Author of Liberty. We praise you and we ask everything in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag on three, one, two.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Here.
Councilmember Purdon.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Folic.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Here.
Mayor, welcome all. I'm glad to see you all here. I see some friendly faces, some of the same faces. Thank you for coming. All the people watching online, hello, you're welcome. I'm part of the city and I enjoy you being here. Have a public comment, please? No public comment? Okay. We move on to eight, consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Okay. Public hearing number nine. Mike?
This is the second reading of an ordinance of the City of Benita Springs, Florida, amending the Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter Four, Zoning. To amend Chapter Four, Article Five, Division Eleven, Subdivision Two, Downtown Form-Based Code, Section Four dash eight six six, creating an administrative variance process. To amend Chapter Four, Article Six, Division Seventeen, Construction of Fences. To adopt Chapter Four, Article Six, Division Forty-four, Employee Living Facilities, creating property development regulations for employee living facilities, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, and modifications that may arise from consideration at public hearing and an effective date.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Good morning, everybody. Mike Feegon with Community Development for the Record. I realize you can't view the presentation, but I do have it up on the screens for those in attendance, and I believe you were given handouts that have the presentation on there. It's a very short presentation, so we won't take too much of your time going over it. It's going to be myself to talk about the first item, and then I'm going to turn it over to another one of our senior planners, Mary Zizzo, to talk about the second and third items there that Mike referenced. So with the first one, it has to do with creating an administrative variance process for the downtown form-based code. And if you go to slide three in your presentation handout, this talks about the addition of an administrative variance process. It's important to note that the way this was encapsulated was it was intended to be for just the commercial transects or the properties that have commercial uses on them, so T4, T5, T5 core, and some special districts. And we weren't trying to reinvent the wheel when we did this, so a lot of the criteria that we are going to utilize for this administrative variance process is already existing in other variance criteria elsewhere in your code. So again, we're not really reinventing the wheel with anything like this. The one thing that does set it apart from, say, a public hearing variance is that we do have an approval criteria that requires them to demonstrate compliance with the intent of the form-based code. So if they're asking for a variance from a code section in the form-based code, they need to give us the reasons why, they need to provide us what they want the remedy to be, and they need to accurately describe how this remedy is still in compliance with the form-based code and that it overall won't hinder the project or the project's compliance with the form-based code. So there's a big premium placed on compliance with the form-based code still, even if you're asking for a variance. The other criteria, like I said, exist elsewhere in the code already. There needs to be an exceptional or an extraordinary circumstance as a reason for the variance. So you can't request a variance just because. There has to be a reason, whether there's something, there's an encumbrance on the property, or perhaps if you're trying to utilize an existing building that you might have some trouble with in terms of getting that building to meet full compliance, things of that nature. We need to make sure that these exceptional or extraordinary conditions are not the result of actions taken by the applicant. So again, it can't be that they want a variance just because they want one. There needs to be a bit more stronger reasoning than that, something code-based to tie it to. And we also need to verify that the variance, if it's granted, is the minimum necessary to relieve the burden. So for an example, if I wanted a setback variance, let's say, and I wanted the setback to be 20 feet, for whatever reason, you know, I want a 20-foot setback, but the code says, well, the maximum that you can get is 10 feet. Realistically, you can pull it off in 15. 20 is probably too much. 15 seems to meet more the intent of the code. Then 15 is what we would try to see we get agreement for. So it needs to be the minimum necessary to relieve the burden. And then also making sure that the granting of the variance will not be injurious to the public welfare. So understanding what the variance is, reviewing it from the lens of what's going on around the property, what are the uses in the surrounding area, is this variance going to have a negative impact? If it is, that's not going to bode too well for you. If we don't see any type of injury or damage to the public welfare, that's a check in your favor. So all those criteria together would create the administrative variance process for the city. And just like other variance processes in the city, if the variance is denied by staff, they would still have the right to come to you to appeal it. So that part's not changing. So are there any questions about the admin variance process? Yes, sir.
Any regulation on the size of truck or the equipment that comes along with this employee?
Okay, so that's, are you talking about the employee housing section?
Yeah.
Okay, that's coming up next with Mary. I don't want to speak for Mary on that one. We're going to talk just about the form-based code variance for right now.
Yes, Fred.
Yeah, on that, the one that bothers me the most, that front setback, what, I could see a restaurant getting a 20-foot setback instead of 10 because they could put probably a couple rows of tables out in front of the restaurant for outside dining, but I'm not real excited about seeing for many other purposes.
That's a very specific example, to something like that, since again, that's just an example. We don't have anything like that right now in the door. But what I would say is if someone were to provide a variance in order to put more outdoor seating along the sidewalk, I would also want to see what else they were doing to address the entry. Is it just going to be tables? Are you going to give me some type of awning or canopy?
Yeah.
What else are you going to be doing to help address the frontage area? And that could be taken under consideration then.
And then I would want something in the variance that says, if you don't do what you said, or you do it initially, but then you change it, you were going to put Christmas trees and other stuff out there for sale? No.
Yep, so using that same example, what staff would do is if staff were to approve the variance, very similar to how we do public hearing variances, there'd be a list of conditions of approval. So there'd be conditions that they would have to follow and hopefully agree to beforehand that would help effectuate the change with the comfort level that staff wants for downtown. So something like that could be written in there that if you plan on changing the use of that space out front, it could negate the variance, you may have to come back through the process, things like that.
Would it be too much to ask that that wording be put in now as a definite, that it's got to be, they can't just change the use later for that purpose that they gain?
Well, I think one thing to keep in mind is again, that's a very specific request for a very specific portion of the code. This variance process lets you essentially request a variance from any portion of the downtown form-based code. So not just that section. It could have to do with another type of entry feature. It could have to do with perhaps certain parking requirements, things like that. So once the variance comes in the door, we'd be able to craft specific conditions for that request. And that would just be how it is. So I don't know if adding specific language to address frontage right now as part of a variance would get us where we want to go.
I think it ought to be that way for any of the variance.
Sure.
If they got it for a specific condition, and then once it's granted, they honor that condition for a while, then they change why they got it for another purpose, I think they need to come back and get it reapproved. That's my opinion. Strong opinion.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Mike, what if somebody builds a fence right on the property line? How do you, who maintains the other side of the fence?
So fences right now are allowed to go right on the common property line. Typically, we recommend at least a six or an eight-inch offset to avoid property line disputes and things like that. If it's an issue of maintenance, that's another reason why we recommend an offset. That way you're not technically trespassing on somebody else's property to maintain the other side of the fence. But if it's on the common property line, if it's facing the neighbor, the neighbor has certain rights, you know, both sides have certain rights then at that point.
Nobody has the responsibility. They each has the responsibility of both sides of the fence?
Well, I mean, so we have a property maintenance code that requires maintenance and upkeep of your property and so on and so forth, and, you know, at that point, I guess it could be a he said, she said battle. But again, that's why we recommend the offset. So even though the code allows you to put it on the property line, we always recommend an offset.
Anything else?
So with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to Mary to talk about some changes to the fence code and then the employee housing ordinance.
Good morning, council. Mary Zizzo for the record. In front of you on slide four in your presentations, we'll go over the fence code changes. This is based on a lot of feedback we're getting from applicants. In certain scenarios, the code doesn't necessarily match what the residents are requesting or commercial businesses are requesting. So the first change is that currently, all fences on a property must be of uniform materials on all four sides. So this creates three exceptions to that. That includes if at time of local development order, the city architect waives that requirement. It also includes fences within water body setbacks. Because the height changes, the material can also be changed, we determined. And then within the agricultural overlay in San Carlos Estates Water Control District, we thought that two materials would be appropriate. Since those properties are so large, you can have one material within the street setbacks, and then typically people will want chain link around the rest of the property. Moving forward, consistent with Florida Building Code, Section Four dash one four six seven was amended to allow for fence wings 18 inches seaward beyond a seawall or riprap, again, consistent with the Florida Building Code. Within commercial and industrial districts, chain link fence material is permitted within these proposed restrictions, provided that a green or black powder-coated chain link fence is proposed and a continuous visual screen is installed along the exterior, which should match the height of the fence within one year of planting. So prior commercial and industrial areas were not permitted to have chain link fences, except in certain scenarios, open storage and so forth. So now this would allow them to do that along the perimeter or how they choose to do so, again, provided that it is an architecturally pleasing fence in that the hedges or some type of landscaping provides a continuous visual screen. Section Four dash one four seven two was repealed and replaced in its entirety. This was to match what other local jurisdictions are doing. We received a lot of feedback about the locational requirements for residential gates and then for gates in general for commercial properties. So what this provides is a possible waiver based on the conditions for the residential gate houses or gates. Not every scenario should require a 100-foot minimum right-of-way or five feet of stacking. Certain scenarios, based on the conditions we propose, can be waived. And then security gates are permitted, provided that they are open during operational hours so that we don't have a stacking problem with those. Again, those will still meet the fire department's requirements to make sure that they are able to get in, and the police department, they are able to access the properties whenever needed. And then lastly, we added a section at the bottom, Section Four dash one four seven four regarding hedges. Hedges do not require a permit, but these add locational standards consistent with the request of public works to make sure that the hedges are not a problem within the right-of-way and that site visibility is not obstructed. Any questions regarding the fences?
What's the height requirement, or do we have one, for fences and hedges?
So hedges, we don't have a requirement, but again, it will depend on visibility because they don't require a permit. Now, for fences, for a residential property, for example, within the street setbacks, it's three feet if it's solid, four feet if it's open mesh like chain link or the open vinyl. And then six feet height max around the sides, or if you're at least 25 feet back outside of the street setbacks. Within the rear is six feet unless you're within a water body, which would be a three-and-a-half foot maximum.
That's fences and hedges?
It's fences.
Just fences?
Hedges don't have a restriction, correct? Because we don't require a permit, so we don't monitor them.
Should we have a height requirement? Maximum height? Mr. Dahmer says probably not.
It's at council's pleasure, but we do receive a lot of feedback that people want taller fences, so they put in the hedges to provide that extra height.
And what about the new, I don't know what the material is, but it's almost like plastic, white, and neither side, you can tell who put it, you know what I mean? Like it's...
The white vinyl fences? Mm-hmm. Those would be allowed within these restrictions, yes.
I got a question. Various, maybe I'm on the wrong page here. Variance is the minimum necessary to relieve the burden. Is that on, am I on the wrong page?
Yes, go to the next page, please. Go to the next page. Slide four.
Yeah, that's seventeen. Fences, yeah.
Page four, page four.
Page three is not you?
No.
Nope, that's what Mr. Feegon just discussed with you.
Okay, all right.
Question on the hedge. Do you have anything that says what happens when the hedge is growing out beyond the property line onto the other guy's property?
No, the property maintenance code would address that.
They have to have a setback.
Hedges don't require a setback, but again, same with fences along the common property line, we're not giving you the authority to trespass on your neighbor's property.
Yeah, but fences don't grow.
Correct, but you still need to maintain your property and make sure it's not encroaching into your neighbors.
And if it does, your neighbor has the right just to take it, to clean it.
Correct. On the Florida...
If you place, if a tree grows across property lines or hedges grow across property lines, property on the other side has the ability to cut it.
Can you vote on that or something?
Still one more section.
One more section, we can move on to the employee housing.
Next page.
Next page.
Page five.
This is the proposed addition of Division Forty-four for Employee Living Facilities Regulations. At the request of council, we created these regulations for future companies that come in requesting to have living facilities for their employees. With there, we create a definition, and then in Section Four dash two three two one provides the locational standards. So they are permitted within any multifamily residential district, and then where multifamily dwelling units are permitted. So that's many of the commercial districts as well. The density that would be permitted for those is a ratio of four to one, similar to other group quarter facilities. So if cooking facilities are not provided, or if communal cooking facilities are provided, then four people equals, I'm sorry, four persons equals one dwelling unit, the way we calculate density. So if it operates as a standard apartment, then it would be the standard density for an apartment one-to-one. The same standard applied for parking. We wanted to make sure that adequate parking was provided for these facilities, and again, that's based on how these units function, so they would give us that information at time of limited development order. Architecturally, we will require that these facilities go through architectural review, whether existing buildings or not, to make sure that the structures are compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, but still can come up to Chapter Three standards that we have architecturally and as well as for site development. With every employee living facility, a zoning determination will be required. They'll have to come to us and say, here's what we're looking to do, and we'll make sure that that is a permitted use within that location. And then, like I said, a local development order will be required prior to any changeover, whether it's an existing structure or not.
Mary, allows employee living facilities for all employees and their immediate family?
Correct.
My daughter-in-law is Swedish.
Okay.
And they really ran into a problem because a large group of Muslims decided to migrate, and they brought three to four wives and families. So how are you defining immediate family?
And that is...
They did limit it at the end to three because it just got too expensive.
Correct, so correct me if I'm wrong, but constitutionally, that is defined.
So there are many restrictions at the federal and state level as to what defines a family, and as we've seen the last couple generations with divorce, stepparents, all sorts of things, a family is sort of defined as a group of people living together in a family situation. So if that's, that would constitute a family in all candor and would be protected. What it would not be would be seven men who are unrelated in any fashion or living together, even if they said they were a family, that would be the outside case.
Correct.
I'm just curious as to how you came up with the two-mile proximity requirement or transportation to be provided.
Sure, so the intent was that since we are providing an option to have a greater density than a typical apartment complex would be, we wanted those impacts to be less for these parcels. So we believed that if the structure was, excuse me, was within two miles of the employer operation or the offices, then it would be a lesser traffic impact on the roads. Should they want to go further than that, we felt that transportation should be provided during the operational hours.
I think that's pretty, I think that's very restrictive. You know, I'm not sure, for example, if you have a business out on West Benita Beach Road, that you could find a place to do employee housing within a two-mile radius of your property. Further, how do you measure the two miles? Is it street miles or is it air miles? And the whole idea was to, let me give you an example. We just went through an exercise of hiring teachers and staff for our church. We could not find a single person living in Benita Springs that was available to be hired as a teacher or a staff. We had applications from Cape Coral, we had applications from Lehigh Acres, and so forth. What we're trying to do is we're trying to get a live-local, work-local kind of environment. And I think if we put in a mileage restriction or a requirement that transportation be provided, we're just fighting against ourselves on that. I don't see why if an employer wants to provide housing and the impact on parking is not there, why the employee shouldn't be able to have cars. I don't see why if Hertz in Astero wanted to provide employee housing, they couldn't find a location to do it in Benita Springs. So, you know, I just simply think that that requirement is...
I do want to make clear that this is not a request to provide affordable housing, it is for employee living facilities. So affordable housing would be regulated under the libel of the law.
I'm not talking about affordable housing, I'm talking about workplace housing.
Is there a radius that you would feel more comfortable with, or would you rather...
I would say if they do it anywhere that it's permitted within the City of Benita Springs.
That the office be located within the city?
No.
Okay.
That employee housing could be provided anywhere within the City of Benita Springs.
Okay.
What happens if you...
It's so vague, you know, how do you respond to that? Anywhere? Well, good luck.
Anywhere that is permitted.
Good luck, but we're talking right now.
What if, okay, hypothetically, if we got the proximity requirement out of this, everybody else seems comfortable with every other component of this, is that right? Let's talk to John and see what that looks like, and if, I don't want to hamstring us, because initially I was like, why would you want to take it out? But then thinking about the process of getting people to live, to come to Benita who already don't live here, a lot of that network goes out farther, and a lot of those cities are then precluded. So you don't want to fight against yourself, I think is how you put it. And I think that kind of makes, you're actually opening the opportunity to more people to utilize it if that restriction isn't there or it's significantly modified. John, am I saying or thinking about that right? Can you talk to us about what that would look like?
So none of these are really set up in a vacuum. You all choose to remove the restrictions, that's entirely up to you. The reason why it was there, and Mary touched on it a little bit, is because when you start looking at how this type of housing is provided and how it relates to the workforce, it's not really done in a vacuum. We already have transportation problems in the city, and the whole purpose is to how many units can you get to reduce them. That being said, the points that were brought up are just as valid. When I've tried to hire people for our department, we've had the same problems. Most people are close by, but very few are actually from Benita Springs. And I guess it kind of goes to what the intent of this ordinance is to do. If this ordinance is supposed to provide kind of like, I won't call it a last resort, but for lack of a better word, last resort housing to keep people close for jobs that wouldn't be able to pay enough to afford a typical housing unit in Benita Springs, that's one objective. If the other objective is basically what others have done is to kind of get people started or to accommodate more of a middle-class workforce, that's really another intent. So what we had looked at here was probably a little bit lower on the income scale than what I think some of the discussion has started to evolve into. But if we're looking to change that or to make it more inclusive or to accommodate additional types of options, we can start making some modifications to go down that path. That's not, that's not a problem. It just wasn't, wasn't really the targeted outcome that we were looking for. But the points that are made are just as valid as anything that we've suggested.
Would it be accurate to say that if we removed... Would it be accurate to say that if we removed that component, it would open it up to more people and more businesses to participate?
Of course. The, the thing is, when you open it up, what are you, every time you make a change, there's going to be an impact. And if we are willing to deal with the impacts that that change creates, then we've created successful policy.
Thank you.
And the other option, oh, Fred, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I, I...
Yes, Fred.
Number one on this, I agree with Chris, and first of all, how many people in the city, our employees, live in the city? We've got a bunch of them that don't. You can't force people to turn over housing that they have to workforce if they don't want to. And I, I think this whole thing that we're doing here, a guy puts up a big hedge right on the property line, now it grows out, he won't trim it, now I, as a adjoining owner, I'm going to have to cut it at my expense? All we're doing is creating a whole bunch of variances that are going to come back, and the people are going to raise hell. And you know who they're going to raise it with? Us. I won't be here, hopefully my wife will be, but you guys are going to be dealing with...
If I could respond real quickly to that?
The problems where people get complaining.
Councilman, and, and in terms of, of the maintenance of that hedge, I think that it was talked about briefly, but maybe to bring a little bit more detail out, that standard already exists. If your, if your vegetation is growing across the property line, it is your responsibility to maintain that.
Okay. Somebody else said it was, the property owner had the right to cut it if he didn't.
If, if, if the neighboring property owner chooses, yes, they have the right to cut it themselves. What I'm saying is, is that in terms of the responsibility for maintenance, it lies with the hedge planter.
Yeah, I, I, I think we're making a lot of extra work for neighborhood services that are under manned as it is. I, I'm not generally for this personally, and especially the thing about Chris is talking about.
And shifting gears back to the, to the housing, I think that there appears to be some discussion on kind of removing some of the, the distance regulations, and maybe modifying how we target this. Are we at a place where you want to just simply remove that and vote, or is this a situation where you'd like us to kind of go back and tinker with it a little bit more and then bring it back?
Tinker with it some more, I, it's fine with me.
I'm, I'm comfortable with you removing it, so we can move on.
Well, okay.
The two-mile proximity.
Because I think that, I mean, that, everybody, this employee housing thing, this is something we asked them to look at, they've came up with a pretty decent plan, we can at least move the needle on it, and if this is the one thing holding us up, I think we can get rid of it, and we can actually try to get something moving in regards to it. Because if not, they're going to tinker with it, then we're going to come back, we're going to play merry-go-round for a while again. But instead, we could vote on it now, unless there's, you know, some big thing that I'm missing.
No, no, if that's the path, that's fine, and we can always, after the vote, we can take a look at it, see if there's anything that we suggest also, saying, well, based on this, perhaps do following changes. And if not, we have already, you've already voted on it, it's in place.
And what if the employer provides mobile scooters, or mobile bikes, right? And if they belong to the, to the employer, but the employees can use it at their will, and they're safe, and they're, you know, that could be a solution that, you know, so they can get to wherever they have to go without having to have a car on the road.
Well, that's the railroad right-of-way project, I'm glad you're for it.
All right, so...
That's true, it goes into transportation impacts, but that's, that's kind of a separate question.
Sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, Mayor.
My turn.
Mayor, no, it's mayor, city, Arlene?
So I get a chance to talk here?
Well, Arlene has a point.
Yes, Arlene.
I, I just want to address, John, this was specifically, we had an instance where we provided a variance at a location, and the idea of the extra density is to actually specifically accommodate those employees to that business.
Correct.
So in, in essence, we're trying to encourage that location to be close for them for shopping, for, for their regular living, we want them as close as possible to that. So it's actually permitting that higher density in that location. If this, if we do, as a council, if council chooses to remove that, I think it is important to come back with some additional regulations for that density, to understand how that works, and, and how you put that in proximity to that business. Because the whole goal of this is to encourage the living near where they're working. So providing a benefit outside of that is actually, if it, if we're, this particular ordinance is to help those to load a modern income, which is a little bit different than workforce, and so transportation issues are, are concerning for them, we want to make sure that that's provided to them, that they have that transportation as well. So that, I just think there's some more work to be done if you choose to move, remove the proximity at this point.
We could talk about the density again, I think, but I'm part of, there's very few places where we can move the needle on density, and this is one of them. And density overall is going to have an impact on affordability. And that's kind of, you know, we don't have a ton of areas where we can specifically make, move the needle, so we're talking about this micro project, but then we're worried about, well, if we allow this, we might, you know, allow this in other parts of the city. I think we can address that when we get there, because right now, A, we're not there yet, but B, in the worst-case scenario, we have a little bit more density in little areas. And that's not necessarily a bad thing. Density kind of gets a, gets slammed all the time as being this, this horrible way, but if we do it in a way that makes sense, we're, we're not, we're putting them, we're splattering them in areas where it's going to make sense, close to proximity to work. It's not like we're building, you know, a fifteen-foot tower right in the middle of Old Forty-One right now, you know? It's not like we're, we, there's way too much traffic, this is all of the general density arguments that you have, this isn't going to create all of those like a huge complex, or a huge new community would. This is going to be splattered throughout the non-gated communities probably, pretty much probably two in five, for the most part. So, I mean, I'm not necessarily in the vein that we have to make it, make the density portion go away, but I do a hundred percent always respect what staff runs for. So I think we should definitely look at what those impacts would be, but no way inhibit the vote moving forward based on...
So, yeah, I think that the goal would be to encourage that density closest to the workplace, because that's most convenient for the employee, that, that's, that's the ultimate goal.
So are we comfortable?
You're not, you're not, you're in defense? No, you're, where's John?
I do, I do just want to point out, if you remove the proximity requirement, you are opening up that any office facility within the region can then provide their housing within Benita Springs.
Hey, John, if somebody wants to build a fence, for some reason, they want to build a fence, they should put it on their property so they can maintain both sides of it. What's wrong with that?
There's nothing wrong with it, and that's actually what's required, you can't put a fence on your neighbor's property. Currently, the...
Well, I don't know why they need a fence in the first place.
Well...
You're allowed to have a gun.
Mark Twain said they make great neighbors.
You're a shotgun.
So currently, there's no setback for a fence. Mr. Pegan had said that generally, we recommend you maybe come off of the property line about a foot, so that way you have the ability to, to maintain it, or at least some ability to maintain the, the backside of the fence, without going onto your neighbor's property. That being said, you don't have to do that, and if you have a survey, you can show that you're planting, or you're installing that fence right on the property line. But you cannot put it on your neighbor's property.
Mr. Mayor, Derek Purdon, City Attorney, I want to apologize a little bit, because part of, part of the reason you're seeing this is a consolidated ordinance with three separate distinct areas, the fencing, the variance procedure, and, and the employee housing, was because we kind of processes like similar glitch bills to the land development code. So I think there's been a little bit of confusion because of the three things. I mean, at, at this point, I'm almost of, of the belief that you want to be able to cut down a neighbor's fence two miles away from their property. So what, what I might recommend is if, if we need more time to discuss a couple of the items that are discussed, and not just the two-mile issue, that we continue this meeting, and allow staff to do one-on-ones with each of you to figure out if there are particular issuers. Because I, I believe there's, there's, I think there's pretty good support on the employee housing, but I do believe there are questions that answered. What, what Ms. Sizzo just pointed out concerns me, is that it could be interpreted the reverse, that employee housing for Astero could be placed into Benita, and we need to make sure that that's not the intent here. So I, I just think that maybe we do need to take a break and, and make sure that each of these issue areas are properly addressed with, with council.
I think we ought to separate these two issues, for sure.
Yeah.
So, I would make a motion that we do what Derek just said, and take, take a minute, look at it.
So table?
Not table, I don't want to say table it, I would just say, give staff a chance to look at it one more time, and then talk to us on it.
I think that we, we probably need to come up with, yeah, the thought of, we're going to bring this up at the next meeting or the following meetings, that way we can continue to a date certain.
To save ourselves some advertising, and part of the, part of the reason we're meeting here today was because we advertise this meeting to avoid re-advertising. What I would say is, we'll continue this discussion on the adoption of the ordinance until our March sixth meeting at five-thirty at, at City Hall. And if, as long as anyone who's paying attention today understands that that's where we're continuing to, we won't have to re-advertise. If, for some reason, we need to push it back because there's still more discussion, we can do it then.
I'd make that as a motion.
Second.
I'm going to ask a question.
Yes, Nigel.
Thank you, sir. I have a question, whether it's Derek or John, where did the two-mile proximity come from? I know nobody just made it up, or did they?
It was generally, it was generally an analysis based upon when you're combining transportation impacts with property availability. So it was really, I won't say a back-of-the-napkin calculation, but it was a front-of-the-napkin calculation, to figure out how you reduce those numbers while maintaining higher densities.
So in your opinion, not critical to this?
It's not critical, I, I think that it defi, it really goes, let me take a step back, it is critical in terms of defining what you mean by local. And so, and what you all mean is an intent of this ordinance. So if the intent is to make sure that there are places in Benita Springs for employers to have their housing, and as long as they're in Benita Springs, we consider that local, then removing this is stating that the employer and the employee housing must be located within the municipal boundaries of Benita Springs, that meets the intent. If we're looking to have people be able to walk, walk to the office, or walk to the job site, you're looking more at a quarter-mile to a half-mile. So if, I think what I'm hearing is, we're looking at a citywide intent, and that's something that, that can very easily be modified to be...
And what was the motion again?
Exactly what Derek said.
To, to continue to your March, March sixth meeting.
And it was seconded by somebody?
Yes.
I seconded it.
Okay, any other comments? Go call, please.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fullick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Wow, that was exciting. Okay, any comments? We went through that. Accept the deeds from Lee County, attorney, please?
Yes, what you have before you, as I know, there's quite a bit of documents in there, we have, as part of the ongoing push with BG Mine for, to secure access to the city park, what we have is an agreement with Lee County, they will provide us the right-of-way that we need, they are asking for an exchange, they're also working with BG Mine on some firming to protect them from potential flood issues, they're asking the city to grant a slope easement in one condition, and then the only other condition that's really relevant to this is that when we, when the road is constructed, they're asking for us to give them an easement across part of the thirty-acre park, so that they'll be able to have public access to the Kaiker Preserve, which I know that we've discussed openly. So it's a pretty straightforward agreement. If you have any questions, please ask Matt.
Make a motion to approve.
I see, who's paying for all these surveys and stuff? Is that Benita Mine?
All that's being paid for by the developer, by BG Mine.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any other comments? Go call, please.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fullick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Okay, I was going to ask the city manager, oop.
I have two, just two real quick things that came in, in between. One was, Mr. Mayor actually asked me at the beginning of the meeting whether or not we had an ordinance or regulation regarding the posting of signs on publicly-owned trees. We do, our sign code prohibits it, so I should let, let you know that one.
Is there a fine on that, or who enforces that?
It would be at, at best, a second-degree misdemeanor, same as other code violations.
Tony's job?
It would be Tony's or the sheriff's, depending on who.
Okay.
And crew.
You can cite, cite the individual cause of the problem.
Thank you, thank you.
The other item is, I, I got a, the mayor, I'm sorry, the city manager and I have received a letter from Theriak in Spain, they were asking for a, a general adjustment in their rates. They have not had a rate increase on their hourly rate since before I was city attorney, which is 2018. So they're, they were currently asking for a rate, at the highest rate for David Theriak, three hundred dollars an hour, and then lower late rates for paralegals and associates below hand, he's currently been billing at two hundred and fifty dollars an hour. And this is well below market, it's below what we pay our insurance carrier when we have rates under them as well, so I, I do recommend approval, I just wanted to bring it to your...
Isn't this a budget item?
No, because the general list will be coming out of our risk management fund, or his rates will be paid by developers when we, when we have our cost recovery, when they're coming in for applications and his office reviews.
You also have a miscellaneous legal fees that that is charged from, it's just that the rate form would be then be executed by the city manager.
And are the paralegal fees going up as well?
I'm sure they are, their, their requested rate is a hundred dollars an hour, which is also well below market.
But they haven't asked for that?
Uh, that's what, I, I don't recall what their current rate, that's...
I'm not sure their current rate, that's, that's the new proposed rate.
Oh, okay.
And I, and I, I am assured that also his market rate for general practice is much higher than that in the community.
And did they try to use their paralegals versus themselves?
Oh, yeah, yes. If you, if you look at, if you look at the billing received, especially in the recent litigation, three hard-working Americans, the vast bulk of the work was done by the associates and law clerks to prepare everything.
Derek?
That's it for me.
Do you need a motion for that?
Uh, no, I don't need a motion, it's, it's, we just want to bring it to your attention.
So I'll, we will be signing the, the new rate form.
Thank you, Arlene.
Okay, city manager, please.
Thank you, Mayor, council. As you recall, at the last meeting, we presented to you that we had received indication from Lee County, that they would like a representative for the CBGDR grant funding project. I was able to talk to county manager on Monday, and also did watch the, the meeting, the Lee County Commission meeting. At this time, they respectfully are going to keep the makeup of the meeting the same. It was indicated to me that the, to make sure, clear that the final decision-making authority is the Lee County Commissioners, so if there is a question or concern, they are available to outreach to them as well. This is just a recommending board. It was also stated during the meeting that the concern was, is if it was a staff member, the staff are the folks who are preparing the applications, and then they would be on the other side ranking them. So that, that was the concern that was regarding a staff member. So at this time, it would be beneficial for the city to have a representative participate, and so we're looking for your direction. In speaking to Assistant County Manager Glenn Salyer, should there be a concern about today, I think we might possibly have our March sixth meeting to still appoint someone before the committee starts, but if you have somebody in mind as council to appoint, this would be a good opportunity. It would be good for them to also meet with Matt, myself, and Ellie as soon as possible to start reviewing our projects, and then, you know, so they're fully aware of the city's, the city's requests.
I'd like to nominate Mike Gibson.
Oh, I was going to do that, I seconded.
Because he was with us during Ian, that's what this whole CBDGR funding is about anyways. He served us during Ian, and he's been here since, so he's, not only has the historical context of when we put these into CIPs, but he was here during the storm, and now he knows, you know, he's been around since then, too. So it's not like we're having to recreate the wheel, or try to catch somebody up the same way we would, when we initially were discussing it, so I, I'd like to nominate Mike Gibson.
Second. And he's also knows how we work through the process with Ellie and the grants, and so he's been here, and he's stayed focused, and he was a terrific deputy mayor during Ian. So, kind of fits right in.
Yeah, I'd like to add in that Mike will not go off on a tangent on his own. I know some of the people that I heard names of, I will leave them silent, would try and introduce their thought process, not our thought process. I think it's important for continuity.
Just a comment that Mr. Gibson, despite not being an elected official, manages to attend a number of our meetings, and just pointing out that he is present here today. So thank you, Mike.
We only have one nomination, or how do we do this again?
I think we call for a vote.
Yeah, we ought to call for a vote on this one, and if there's, after that's been decided, give our way, we can open the floor to additional nominations.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second on the floor.
Yep.
To nominate Mike Gibson. Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fullick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Does he have to wear long pants if he goes to these meetings?
Big boy pants.
Mayor, I just have a couple further announcements to make. We will have one
more meeting here tomorrow. That will be the LPA meeting that's going to occur. It's already been pre-advertised. After that, we will be back at City Hall for our remaining meetings. I did want to make everyone aware that we are going to have a workshop on March 5 with Dr. Margaret Banyan. That's a Tuesday. And then you will have a presentation by Dr. Banyan on the comprehensive plan at our March 6 meeting, which is at 5:30, which again will be at City Hall next time. And I think that was-
So Margaret's hearing, Margaret's Town Hall will also be at City Hall?
Will be at City Hall, correct. Correct. And then, we will until, I'll have Ellie correct me, but we will until the end of the month have our representatives participating from Lee County for additional intake. That's still at City Hall. They'll have opportunity for anyone who would like housing information through Lee County. They can do that through the end of the month. After that, it will be located in Fort Myers. But we'll be able to help in any way. Should someone need us here at City Hall, we'll help, we'll help them as well to get connected.
Ellie, do you have any information about the possible renourishment at the south side of Benita Beach? I heard they got their permits finally or something. Is there anything about that?
So-
People ask me, and I don't have any information.
Matt does. So we're still, we have a firm that's been seeking temporary easements from folks along that corridor. We still have people that are holding out, and we have some folks that have not responded after a year's worth of contact efforts that we'll be talking to about. We do have the permits. It is turtle season coming up. The county will be bidding the project in conjunction with the normal renourishment project that it does at the north end, that you may be familiar with, Mr. Mayor. So we are still trying to get some participation. We have quite a bit. We have, as I mentioned, some holdouts that may not be interested in it. So we're on schedule to be able to do it in November, assuming we have enough participation. If not, we may have to look at a different means to address the folks at the south end.
Now, this gentleman was going to do Lover's Key first. Is that still on the program, you know?
Yes. Lover's Key, for those that may not be familiar that are listening, Lover's Key in the north third of Benita Beach is a routine renourishment project. That will be starting some point after November 1, which coincides with the end of turtle nesting season. The remainder of the beach is not under a recurring project, and so therefore we had to seek temporary easements that allowed us to place sand. We have people that are not interested in that project, and depending on how many, it may not be buildable. So we will be, still are seeking easements. We have quite a few, but we have some folks that are not interested. We have some folks that haven't responded. In the event that we don't have enough to make a feasible project, we'll be looking at a truck haul project. And I'll be talking to you about that in the upcoming month.
Is that much more expensive?
Of course, and much more intrusive.
Under this local emergency, does that allow anybody and everybody from the government to be on private property? Because they were, after the storm, they were all over people's private property.
I can't speak for the county's agents, but of, you know, it depends on the emergency and what the declaration is. I don't know the particulars, but generally speaking, private property is private property.
And what if the minority are those that object? Can you then still go forward?
We live in America. Private property is private property.
So do you just skip them, though? Can you still do every, no?
We would have to work with Lee County as well as the engineer and find out what, if it's still a viable project, but that's forthcoming.
Matt, can you give us a finite number of people that have not responded, and a finite number of people that are opposed or not interested?
You know, I wouldn't consider any of it finite, because we still get people that are signing. I can tell you that we have a majority of the folks wanting and participating. We have probably a finite number of folks that are not interested, that have responded affirmatively and the negative. And we have kind of a critical mass of folks that have not responded. And that's, that's kind of the issue I'll be talking to you about.
But let's use the legal term. Derek, is ballpark acceptable? Can you give us a ballpark number?
Yeah.
It doesn't matter about the number. I can give you the number after the meeting. I don't have it off the top of my head. It matters about the location, because it affects the constructibility.
So my point being, half a dozen people could stop this from happening.
You betcha.
And I'll point out that I think the concern is, well, there's, obviously, we're going to always have some people who just don't respond, who are just non-responsive. But just on some of the correspondence I've seen, the big concern that people often have is when there's feature nourishment, typically there is the resetting of the coastal construction line, change, a change of where the public and private land may start. This renourishment does not involve that at all. And that maybe people are getting confused about that.
It's not an issue of confusion. You're correct. It's, there are very many different reasons why folks are not interested. It's not a large amount of folks, to Councilman Fullick's point. A few folks can affect the constructibility of this.
And will those folks be identified?
We're not in the business of naming names.
So we have, we have, we do have a consultant who is making outreach as much as possible and providing back information to us. We will be mapping that out, because we have to work with that with our engineer, the consultant, as well as the county. And then we'll be able to determine whether it's a viable project after that. I did have one further announcement. I'm understanding, and Councilmember Corey can correct me if I'm wrong, but the last, I'm understanding it's the last. That's what I've heard. Recovery Task Force meeting is February 23 at 10:00 a.m. What, once that's complete, I think, I understand there'll be a request for us to approve the actual recovery plan. And if you need any further presentation on that, please let us know. Otherwise, I think that from our presentation last meeting, council seemed comfortable with moving forward, and I don't anticipate, I'm not anticipating any substantial change to the plan.
There will be no change. Dave Hornet indicated there will be no changes to what you saw, despite some people on the task force.
So we will work with Lee County on the appropriate mechanism, whether it be a resolution of the, of the council for your next meeting, so that we're timely with that to provide it to the county to move forward.
Thank you.
I give you my opinion on the renourishment. Because I was there on the third floor, and the second floor was underwater. Now, when you got 15 feet above sea level, this little doom you're putting out there isn't going to make a big difference. All it does is, it's not pristine. It's mechanically put there, moved around. But people think it's going to save their property. I've lived on the beach for 50 years, and we've had about three, three storms that come across, across the property. But this last one is never, nothing compared to that. Not with the 75 years' experience I have in Benita Springs. So we'll see what happens. I'm not giving away my property. In fact, they won't even touch my property. But anyways, because it's not in their program. But we'll see. The turtles have more power than anybody, because the turtle season's going to be coming up. It won't be this year that they're going to do the renourishment, as far as I can see. So anyways, folks, we keep trying. Anything else? What do we got here? You have anything on the update, Arlene? Did you do it, Arlene?
That information concludes my update. That was-
Okay. Mayor and Council reports. Jamie, you have anything to report?
Just that Pelican Nest asked me to come and speak. I went last night, or yesterday afternoon, and Jackie went with me, and they just wanted updates as to what was going on in Benita Springs and in downtown, and projects in the future. And at the end, they all just came up and said how excited and how impressed they are with how downtown is moving along.
Okay, thank you. Fred, you got something tonight, today?
No, I'll pass tonight.
Okay. Nigel, how about you?
I missed the last TDC council meeting, or because, and I did get the permission of Tamara Piggott, I was asked to do a presentation to the Collier County Bar Association, which was incredibly friendly about interest rates in the economy. And I think it's interesting that so many people believe that we're currently in a recession, and we're not. And if you look at the numbers, everybody might want to take a look at this. The number of homes that are for sale on the market, where the housing supply has actually increased in Benita Springs over the last 90 days, and that will probably continue, that's a good thing. So we're not in a recession, and the housing supply is increasing, despite interest rates actually have been risen in the last couple of weeks.
So TDC, tourist development?
Yes, sir. Tourist Development Council.
Do they spend $65 million on advertisement?
$65 million? No, sir.
Huh?
No, sir, not to my, not that I'm aware.
I'm pretty certain that's what the guy said he does. They spend millions of dollars-
They do spend.
-on advertising. And I don't know, it must work real well, because you can't move in Benita during season. Having it filled up, I don't know if we see-
They make effective use of our tax dollars.
So what is their total budget? Do you have any idea?
No, I don't have the front. I can bring it to our next meeting.
All right. Yes, Jesse?
Yes, sir, thank you. Our two appropriations are still alive, from my understanding. So we're still living in the tally world, fighting for the dollars, so that's a good thing. Also, I had the pleasure of getting with Tony Montalino yesterday, who does the, does the food outreach in the city. They're, they're up to 1,500 meals a month. So I just think that's really impressive. Very good job from them. You all noticed he reached out a while back regarding, you know, ways he could partner with the city. I'm not sure exactly what that looks like yet, but I'll give a staff and maybe come back on that. And then last, on a personal note, my son, he's 11 years old. He's been a Benita Wildcat for three years, four years now. So he's on his fourth year of being a Wildcat, but he actually just made the Benita charter middle team as well as a sixth grader. So he's one of two sixth graders who made the team. So now he's both a Wildcat and a Gator. So, very exciting, very exciting Benita soccer news in the Purdon household. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Excellent.
Chris, you got something for us today?
I wanted to reach out and thank Tony for stepping up with code enforcement efforts up at the Pulte Development north of Shangri-La Road. My email's been burning up with complaints about equipment operators working after hours, trucks showing up at 6 o'clock in the morning running their engines on Paradise Road and Cockle Shell. And the infill, these infill projects, that's what, basically, they're building a housing community inside of housing that already exists. They're dirty projects. People put up with a lot of dirt, dust, noise during the day. They, they need some relief at night, and on the weekends, and early in the morning. So, good job, Tony, and just keep it up. And hopefully, the efforts that we've undertaken will help to solve the problem. And I noted from Angel's report that one of the foremen got on some of the trucks that showed up and sent them away when they got there too early. So hopefully, we can see how it goes, and hopefully, the hammers on the, the display homes will stop at the appropriate time, instead of going past 7 o'clock. And we'll get this thing done. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tony. All right. Okay. Guess who's left? Hi, sweetheart. Go ahead. I haven't interrupted you all night, all day.
Forgive me if I've interrupted you. No, I'll pass, sir. Thank you.
Mayor, I just, just to build on what Councilmember Purdon said, I did want to remind everybody, the Senate and the House will go into their budget meetings on Monday. So now would be appropriate time, if you wish, to do any outreach individually to Senator Pasadena, Senator Martin, and Representative Botina. In the next few days would be appropriate to reach out to them, to remind them how important the Benita Springs projects are.
Okay. Also, we have a Republican primary coming up. If you haven't registered to vote, you're out of luck. That's less than 30 days from now. We got a vote? This is America. You get a chance to vote. If you don't vote, you got a chance. Okay. Public comment? Nothing? Okay, folks. We're ready to adjourn. We're out of here. Thank you.